The project will restore over 420 miles of damage. I'd like to address four topics today. Drawdown impacts to reservoir fisheries, parcel B lands and water quality. In response to recent reports of deer and other animals being trapped in sediments exposed by the drawdown of Copco and Iron Gate reservoirs, the department has increased staff in the area of Copco and Iron Gate reservoirs. We're monitoring the reservoirs every day specifically for the detection of wildlife. We have staff on call who have wildlife-related rescue experience who can respond and evaluate emergency wildlife situations. We're answering any concerns directed to our Reddington Headquarters' main phone number and primary email address every day for alerts and notifications about any wildlife that may be trapped or distressed in the project area. We've installed flagry, essentially colored and reflective fabric straps that blow in the wind in locations around Copco to deter wildlife that were determined by our wildlife biologists. Since the department has initiated these measures last month, there have been no more incidents or reports that we are aware of involving any additional deer being stuck in the reservoir footprints of Copco. We recognize that the deer loss is very sad and very unfortunate. Ten deer died, two of which had to be euthanized. And we know how much the Copco community enjoys and values those deer. Wildlife was expected to be impacted by the drawdowns, but the impacts were faster and to more deer than we expected. It's important to remember that the deer herds here in Siskiyou County are very resilient, healthy, and their populations overall remain stable. Resident populations and migratory herds continue to use the area as winter range, and the number of deer observed through our annual survey show consistency over the past couple of years. With regard to wildlife rescue, the department is asking that the public not try and rescue wildlife entrenched in the sediments. Wildlife rescue in situations like this involves a balance between the ability to complete a successful rescue and health and human safety concerns. We also ask the Copco community residents not to feed the deer or leave water out for the deer, providing the food and water for the deer attracts the deer and keeps them in the area around the reservoir, and exposes them to greater risks and dangers. If you see wildlife in distress, please call the department at (530) 225-2300. Impacts to reservoir fishes. The department is aware of the mortality that has occurred in the reservoir footprints. Many of the fish species were non-native, including largemouth bass, yellow perch, blue gill catfish. These non-native fish species are typically associated with reservoir environments. When we transitioned over to the riverine environment, there was expected to be substantial population losses and being eliminated altogether. However, the decline in non-native fish is expected to benefit native fish, including trout, salmon, and steelhead. CDF plans to closely monitor fish populations following removal of the dams to understand the impacts and inform future management actions. The department is also aware that fish mortality has occurred below dam restoration reach as was anticipated as part of the drawdown action. Parcel B lands. Parcel B lands are currently held by KRC, and restoration actions will likely keep many of the parcels with KRC for several years and remain closed as restoration actions are carried out. Parcel B lands will then either be transferred to the state of California or other entities, and the department will work with potential entities to discuss recreation and other issues such as fuels reduction, invasive weed management, but cannot forecast at the time what our access or management will occur. There are three recreation sites proposed for Iron Gate and Copco reservoir areas, including the facility at Iron Gate, a facility near Fall Creek, and expansion of the Copco Day Use Area. Sediment evacuation was expected to be most severe short-term impact, the magnitude and duration primarily influenced by water year type. As part of dam removal planning and environmental review, hydraulic and sediment transport models were developed by the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation and further updated by the Clamath River Renewal Corporation to analyze background conditions and predict suspended sediment concentrations, sediment transport, and river conditions. In real-time, the U.S. Geological Survey is monitoring water quality at nine continuous water quality monitoring stations spanning from Oregon to near the mouth of the Clamath River, as well as the nine locations where grab samples are also being taken. What we're seeing is what we expected to, what we're seeing was expected to occur, and turbidity is going down, but it will continue to fluctuate based on storm events and other actions related to dam removal.
Do you want me to answer your question?
Yeah, well, I've got a few public comments first. Chrissy Reynolds, are you still here?
Yeah.
I think I've got you on this one. Yes, E.
Yeah, come on up here.
Do you want me to move? I'm sorry.
You're okay.
So in regards to parcel, sorry, I'm Chrissy Reynolds, Copco Lake. In regards to the parcel B lands, the option to any resident or property owner, what was never given, for people to buy the land, to continue to allow them to have access to the water, that was never an option. And I'm curious as to if that is an option. I know that the Wildlife Conservation Board is seeking to buy up all of the other properties. And I'm thinking, I'm guessing, that's one of the other entities that you were talking about as far as the state goes, which Chuck Bonham is the head of CDFW, and yet he's also on the board of the Wildlife Conservation Board. I don't know, just as a resident here, I mean, the reason why our parents and grandparents and, you know, other people bought here was so that we could have access to the water. We want to make sure that our rights as citizens that live here still have access to the water that we've been historically able to access, not just for fishing and recreation. The concerns have been known, and I don't know if this is part of California, OES, or whatever, but, you know, with increased traffic just on the reservoir itself, but increased traffic going to be on the river, you know, what protections do property owners have if somebody decides to get out of their raft and then, you know, hike up to the shoreline? You know, are we now at risk to increased vandalism, increased loss of our enjoyment to our land and our private use of our land? And then, I don't know, I just have so many questions. In regards to the wildlife, the pelicans are going to be showing up here very soon. The turkey vultures are going to be showing up here very soon, and they're going to get here, and I know this is part of your guys' plan, but, you know, they didn't have any clue that this is part of the plan. They're going to show up here, and they're not going to have a place to have their breeding grounds, their summering grounds, their access to food has been completely decimated, and just for all of the native or the migratory birds that are lost because of the Upper Tulley Lake reservoirs. We've just eliminated the last bits of open water of the Pacific Flyway.
Thank you. William Simpson?
Okay. My name is William Simpson. I'm a rancher down in Copco. So with regard to parcel B lands, okay, so these sediments, I'm not aware of anybody testing the sediments themselves for heavy metals. We have water samples downriver that show chromium at, like I said, 178 times above EPA limits for chromium. Okay, those sediments are going to turn to dust this summer. Spreading seeds on the surface, any good farmer knows, a rancher, you've got to drill seed in, and that's if you've got good soil. This is microcrystalline clay. It's low pH. It's contaminated with, it's heavy in nitrates and phosphates right off the get-go, coming down out of Clamath Lake from the bird poop and the phosphates. And then there's, of course, soil amendments from the Clamath Basin added in, and then we have all these heavy metals that nobody so far has said, KRC, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, California Wildlife, nobody is testing for mercury, arsenic, barium, cadmium, chromium, lead. They're all off the charts according to Nielsen Lab from the aqueous solution that was tested down at the Clamathon Bridge. So the sediment is going to be much higher. That's just a fact. I don't hear California Fish and Wildlife talking about, what about our livestock? The livestock here have had access to water in either the river or the lakes after the lakes were set up for time immemorial, going all the way back to when this county was settled. This is open range. The livestock water has to be addressed. RES and other people, KRC, said they were going to, if they did diversionary fencing, they would provide alternative water sources. That hasn't been done. Summer's coming, the creeks and springs are going to dry up, the livestock are going to come down, and they're going to challenge those fences. That's a big problem. You only see what you test for. You know, everybody keeps talking about their tests, but when you ask them, are you testing for all these heavy metals? When you ask people, KRC and the fishing game, what are you testing for? They're not testing for these heavy metals. The only metal I've heard about so far today is aluminum. Okay? These other metals, they're going to get into the fish. The fish come down out of the tributaries. Right now, the Clamath River is loaded with these heavy metals, and they're going to continue eroding out of the probably 50 to 60 million metric yards of anthropogenically polluted clay that are loaded with these heavy metals. They're going to come out of the lake bottom. Every time it rains, it's going to erode and leach into the river, every winter. So these fish coming up or out of the tributaries is going to get hammered by these heavy metals, then the birds eat them and die. I mean, and you can't eat these fish once they get into this stuff. As far as the deer population, this is inconsistent. I hope you don't hammer me on my time. As far as the deer populations, this mic keeps going out.
We can hear you.
Okay. As far as the deer populations in California, in our county, California, according to Deer Friendly, at least 1.5 million deer or more. This is a critical wintering deer habitat up here, and our deer population is not as reported. Okay? Anecdotal data was taken from an area just to the east of Grenada, and that data is not consistent with what the real deer populations are. California is down about 1.5 to 2 million deer in the last 30 years. That's a fact. Oregon's down 500,000. That's a fact. So there's a lot of things here that are inconsistent, and we're not seeing transparency. We're not seeing proper mitigation. We're not seeing fallback like Supervisor Hop talks about. What are we going to do about exavailing chromium in the dust?
Mr. Simpson, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to check this mic, please?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Richard Marshall. I'm president of Siskiyou County Water Users Association and also a rancher in the Fort Jones area. And I wanted to talk in particular about the fish because on Sunday, my wife and I traveled down from Iron Gate down along the river, and we took photographs, and we got out of the car, especially at KRC campground, which I invite our KRC folks here to go down to and take a look at. The turbidity in the water, it smells like death as you approach the water, and there's all kinds of dead fish life, crawdads, et cetera. And the river reminds me of Mount St. Helens. When on St. Helens, we saw those pictures of the mud flowing down from that area. So I wanted to, in particular, suggest maybe the Fish and Wildlife Service should change its name to the Ministry of Death for Wildlife, because that's a river of death, literally. Everything is dying, and everything around it, including the trees and so on, that get their water from that river, are going to die. It's going to reach all the way to the bay, to the mouth of the river. It's moving there. If it's not there already, it's moving that way. And it's going to continue as we've talked about before. But I wanted to mention a couple other issues in connection with this. In 2014, I was invited by Paul Hauser to represent him at a debate at the George Mason University, and the debater that I was having with is John Bestick. You may remember John Bestick. He represented Department of Interior. There were 900 people in the audience. They were all basically environmental students from all over the country. They were invited by George Mason to come there. And at the conclusion of the debate, about three-fourths of the group voted that the dam shouldn't come out because there wasn't enough information to support removal of the dams. And there was a particular concern about the fish themselves, the salmon being a one species, a single-species approach to this process of dam removal. Made no sense. Today, the Supreme Court of the United States, this is new information I have for everybody, today the Supreme Court of the United States handed down a decision in the Department of Agriculture versus Kurtz. And in that decision, and the legal pundits are looking at it now, but a lot of them have said this opens the door for lawsuits against federal and state agencies who have made incorrect decisions in these processes that we're witnessing now. So that door may be open for someone like the county or ourselves as citizens who are damaged by this process, which we all know here in this room, most of us, that the scientific facts don't support what's going on. And in fact, this is all a process to reach out and depopulate our area by going after the Scott and Chasta rivers next, and this is the first step. Mr. Bonham's been at this for a long time, beginning with his leadership in the Trout Unlimited Group, is attorney for Trout Unlimited, and he's been in that process ever since. Thank you.
Thank you. So bring it back to the board. Supervisor Hop.
Thank you. Yeah, follow-up on that, you know. I spent the bulk of my adult life professionally nurturing the clamath, the salmon and the scott in the public lands and involved in the private lands as well. To see what I'm looking at right now just rips my heart out, honestly. It's unconscionable to me without mitigation that something like this is occurring. I've heard so much talk over the last 25 years about how important the native stocks are in our tributaries, but they're going to be dead. And that goes back to my concern about the trips. What in the world is your agency going to do to rebuild those populations when they're gone?
So let me start off by saying that, can you guys hear me? Okay, great. So there is a plan. We're working on a plan. We understand exactly what you're talking about. It's been a warm, wet winter. Chinook are already coming out of the gravels. We're already detecting them.
Exactly. That's my point.
And we totally understand that. I don't have the plan in front of me right now. You know, we're still discussing that. We're also developing a plan for what to do with our hatchery fish when they're ready to be released as well. So I will get that to you as soon as possible. I'll get you additional information on that. I just don't have what the staffer is formulating in front of me right now. I want to just say, hey, we understand exactly what you're saying.
I mean, I've never seen anything like this. You know, you're looking at a regional collapse of an ecosystem here. And that's what I see through my scientific training. And I talked about a fallback. That's what I want to know what the fallback is on this, because it has the effect of far-reaching beyond the Clamath mainstem to the rest of the region and the economy of the rest of the region.
Yeah, you know, let me just start off by, sorry, let me just start off by just sort of addressing the idea that, you know, that this is a river of death, and that, you know, everything that we're talking about today, the elevated suspended sediment, sediment content in the rivers, the loss of the reservoir fish as we transfer from a reservoir to a riverine system, these were all impacts that were analyzed, evaluated, put through an environmental review process, permitted, disclosed. So when people say we have no plan, you know, we have incredible restoration plans for the reservoir. Oh, sorry, we have restoration plans developed for the reservoirs with extensive planning. I think we heard over a million acorns, and I don't know how many million sees that have been collected. So the impacts you're seeing out there were not something that were unexpected. As a matter of fact, I think that KRC and the agencies planned well in terms of developing restoration plans, providing them to the public, you know, during the first process. So a lot of the things we're talking about today are understandably very upsetting, but I think at the same time, they were things that we have talked about, analyzed, discussed, and disclosed.
I understand that, and I don't want to diminish the impacts to Copco, but the greater region is my concern. And with the sole focus on the mainstem over there with all those studies, and I have to correct you a little bit, I mean, I've been through all those studies, and they have been tailored, if you will, to limit a few things. You know, there's no mention of a lot of things in those. What about the sturgeon in the river? I mean, all I heard about for years was the 100-year-old sturgeon in the river. Are they going to survive? Is there any plan? Never seen them mentioned. You know, there's just so many questions in my mind that are just unanswered by the so-called science that's been done. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was with regard to money. You know, money in this project, we've been told money's no object, basically, to get this work done. And I can go back to when some of my employees worked on the Clamath Basin Fisheries Task Force. And I know the discussions that took place with the first DIS that came out and with the mitigation agreements. All that's been kind of flushed down the toilet. There were $250 million required in the trips for restoration. What happened to it with the science? You know, did it all of a sudden in the last DIS disappear because it was no longer an issue, or was it just dismissed? You know, you may not have the answer to that. I'm talking to my constituents here, basically, you know, at this point, but those are my concerns. Those are my root concerns. Those are the things that rip my heart out every night, and I say I'm serious as a heartbeat. I am scared to death about what's going on right now from a regional perspective. I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Supervisor Oberg?
I did the mic without, yeah, see, it doesn't even work. I thought I was going to get lucky and get the one without the cord. I can tell you he's upset because he texts me at 4:30 in the morning. I have a lot of the same concerns. I still want to ask you the question about the plan of the hatchery fish and what you know about that and when they're going to be released, and if they're going to be released anytime this year, and where in our river?
And they are going to be released this year, and our fisheries program is working with our hatchery program to develop that final plan. It'll look at turbidity, it'll look at DO, it'll look at suspended sediment. They haven't finalized that plan, so I haven't seen that plan to be able to talk to you about it. But as soon as it becomes finalized, I can also reach out to the board as soon as we get a timeline for when it's going to be finalized.
We've heard, this may be more of an observation than a question, but can you tell us what it looks like for an outlook of when this fishery, the salmon fishery, may come back into this river system?
So the goal is right now to use passive recolonization, you know, to allow the fish to take time to get, so we're looking at evaluating it for about 10 to 12 years, three to four cycles, and at that point, we'll get back together if it's not working out and figure out. But the tension and thought process is, you know, within three or four generations, that 10 to 12 years process that fish will begin to come back, start utilizing both the mainstem and the tributaries.
That's, and that's...
I was talking about salmon.
That's what I said, yes, salmon. So, and that's begin to come back. So that's not when we're going to see like, here comes the, you know, these aren't big numbers. This is like, we're going to begin to see things regenerate.
Well, I think that's an unknown, because, you know, every year we have fish, you know, banging at the bottom of Iron Gate, wanting to go higher, you know, and so we will also be operating the Fall Creek, not the Fall Creek Hatchery, the, yeah, the Fall Creek Hatchery for an additional eight years. So that'll be there as well. It'll continue to produce Chinook salmon and Coho salmon, and we give the presentation and to get the last supervisor's meeting, so I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, so.
And that, is anybody looking at, like, the international fishery and what that does to determine, you know, what our fisheries look like?
So that's a separate process from my program, the whole looking at marine fisheries, in-stream developing regulations. Oh, sorry, developing in-stream regulations. I don't actually do that part.
Because that does have an impact on what returns to our river system.
Yeah, the commercial fisheries, recreational fisheries, and I could follow up more and get more information on you, or perhaps somebody, get somebody to talk about how that's all figured out. I just don't have that information.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Supervisor Brown, say that?
Yeah, just one. So there was obviously a deer stuck in the mud. You said that was that, would you consider what you guys did an immediate response to that event, that was bringing in more resources to prevent that?
You know, I think the first deer being stuck in the mud, we, you know, we did have resources out there. We had our game wardens. They cover a large amount of area. We also have, they're not district biologists anymore, but they're district biologists. They cover a district like part of Siskiyou County and part of Modoc. You know, and we also have our wildlife interaction biologists. So between them, the time we get a call, you know, we can respond fairly quickly. I think in this instance, because we understand the importance of the deer and we want to respond, we've provided even more staffing to be able to respond as quick as possible, as well as the daily patrols that we're doing along the edges of Copco.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I understood that this was not unexpected, something like this would happen?
You know, there was always an expectation that wildlife would be interacting with the mud. You know, I think the deer right away was probably unexpected that would happen so quickly, you know. I think the fact that we haven't had any of the impacts since then, and I'm not a wildlife biologist per se, but what we probably had is a situation where you had more of a residential deer population around Copco. You know, you see me driving around the front lawns, there's still eight or nine that are over there at the end of Copco Lake, I must say Copco Village. So they're still over there. And so, you know, during the initial drawdown, those deer are probably the deer that if they get spooked, they're going to head towards, they're going to head towards the reservoir. In this instance, they did, and it sounded very unfortunate, but since then, you know, we haven't seen the wildlife in distress or stuck in the mud, and we haven't had any calls, you know, to our line that we man seven days a week and check over the weekend, so.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Chris?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Question I have, I have some questions on the hatchery in this production, but I understand you're still looking at stuff. Fish Bowl 2150 said some stuff, but there's more, I know too, the amount of fish that were produced originally at Fall Creek Hatchery. A question from the public was access points to the river. So the parcel B lands, Wildlife Conservation Board will be purchasing those, or purchase those, and then that will be transferred over. What's the plan for access for locals around here for accessing the river?
So if I heard the question, if I heard the question correctly, I have not heard that WCB was purchasing parcel A lands, which are a separate set of lands that is not the reservoir footprint. I think it's what the SIFAC Corp. is intending to keep. What we're going to get, or an entity is going to get, is the parcel B lands, which is the reservoir footprints and sort of the hydroelectric region reach, and that will either come to us or another entity. As the board has, you know, identified, you wrote a letter in terms of the Chastis Indian Nation being that potential entity, there are other entities out there. And at that time, you know, we'll be working with whoever's moving forward, but we can't really talk about access or management because we don't even know who that future entity is yet. But I do want to point out one just once again, and I went through it fairly quick. I'm super, not super great with bullets, as you probably noticed when I read the first part of my discussion today, but, you know, we are going to be putting a recreational site at Fall Creek. We'll have one at Iron Gate, and we're also going to expand the Copco Day Use Area, and those will be on parcel B lands, but they will be open to the public. And I guarantee the department's probably going to be maintaining those unless another entity would like to take that over, so, and those will be open to the public. entity would like to take that over, so, and those will be open to the public.
I share the concern of my colleagues for the tributaries, for them not taking the bulk of criticism, if there is more outmigration or inmigration, I'll leave that at that. For the fishery number, opening up all these potential miles of habitat, there has to be an end number, an end goal. You heard me say this at the Clameth ESA meetings.
I think I gotta answer this, ask this question at my first special board meeting for Clameth, by the board. And the answer is, you know, right now, we just don't know, because unfortunately, we don't know what it's gonna look like, you know, when the river gets to where it is, we start seeing how much spawning gravel's there, well, how much rearing habitat's available, how that's gonna change over the next three to four years, so I just simply can't give you a number of, we're good at seventy-five-hundred, or we think there's gonna be ten thousand utilizing this, or four hundred in Shovel Creek right now.
Yeah, I know, that's a big number, because, you know, for entities, it's this ever perfection.
Oh, absolutely.
Ever perfection of one more, two more. So it could be, there's a point where that number has to acquiesce to what can be accomplished. The last question I have is regards to the revegetation, and this would be a sweet spot, unfortunately, for a canyon fire. There's, I believe, three volunteer firefighters on the Copco Fire Department, four, oh, awesome, you guys. So, four firefighters from the Copco Fire Department, easily two could be gone, so those fuel breaks, and the maintenance of those fuel breaks could be critical, because by the time Horn Brook would get up here, or Cal Fire at Horn Brook, it's a bit of a drive and safety reasons.
Yeah, and I would...
The vegetation management and fuel breaks and maintenance of those vegetations.
And I would probably answer this more of a less of a parcel B question, but more of a landscape level question, knowing that, you know, fuel breaks have to be placed strategically in order for them to be successful. So, you know, if there's planning going on, or discussions are already, you know, fuels reduction, fuel break map that's out there, or Fire Safe Council, you know, that can provide additional information to the department about where there would be suitable fuel breaks, and if they were included in part of parcel B lands, we can include that in our discussions with entities, as well as if we keep it as a state. So, and I don't know what type of fuel break, if you're talking about just defensible space behind people's homes at sixty feet and it's mowed grass, or if you're talking in actually like a shaded fuel break where you're just removing all the trees and or eight inches DBH and limbing everything up and removing all the under story. So, I think there's a, what I'm trying to say is, I think there's a larger discussion there, I think we just need to get more information from the people that are concerned about what the fuel break issue is.
All right. I'll probably ask that question the next presentation, too. Thanks, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Harris, are there any adult fish, steelhead salmon in the system right now that are being harmed from what's taking place?
Yeah, if there were steelhead in the system right now, and there's steelhead in the system, you know, I think as was identified, you know, there were lethal and sub-lethal effects to fish downstream of Iron Gate and Copco during the drawdown process.
And so...
But, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
So I'd like to also just identify that, going back to the river of death concept, and understanding that, I am not denying, the department's not denying, that of course during drawdown, incredible amount of sediment released, there was DO issues, but at the same time, there's so many tributaries that have which confluence where fresh water's coming in, the fish can get into, they can get into the actual tributaries themselves. So at a time when I know you see the water and it's brown and it's got an odor to it and everything like that, also keep in mind that there is refugeia, refugeia all the way down the system where not only juvenile fish that adult fish can get into during this time period, and also as fish are coming out of the gravels, coming out of places like the Shasta and Scott, oh, sorry, coming out of places, it's hard to...
You can pull it up, too, if you want, pull it out of that thing.
Coming out of the systems, you know, the same instincts that say, hey, I need to get into fresh water and I'm sensing it over here, the juvenile fish that are coming out of the tributaries right now in the Shasta Scott, if they're, you know, first of all, we're counting on our rotor screw traps, that doesn't mean they're actually exiting the system, but if they're getting there towards the mouth, that same instinct is probably gonna tell them, I don't want to go into that. So they're probably kegging up in that area right now, so, we're trying to figure out ways to determine that with our...
Are you monitoring that?
We are monitoring it, we're trying to figure out how you would monitor, because we have a rotary screw trap.
Right.
And so, we run it every day and it catches fish, but the Bismarck Brown, which is a dye you put on a fish, so that you can do recapture methodology, where you take some fish, you put them above the rotary screw trap, and you get efficiency to then do a population estimate, it doesn't last long enough, so we don't know if we're catching the same fish that are circling around, so we're trying to figure out a way to do that, so we can effectively come up with a population estimate, so.
Okay. There's, there isn't a smolt release going out currently?
There will be, there will be a co-host smolt release from our Fall Creek Catchery.
About when?
Ah, I want to say that's May, it goes back to that table, I forgot that we don't have cellphone coverage that I'll get, and then, just so you're aware, it's in Chelsea's mailbox, I also did send the draft regulations for the proposed fishing that's going from the Fishing Game Commission meeting, which is consistent with the presentation I think we gave like three or four board meetings ago with Morgan.
And is cowfish and wildlife monitoring water quality?
You know, we're not watering, we're not monitoring water quality, other than we have, you know, DO meters, not DO, we have temperature meters like on our rotary screw traps and stuff, as well as temperature sensors throughout the system, but we don't typically measure suspended sediment or anything like that, and we're not measuring or looking at heavy metals either.
So, the five new positions that have been put on the Clamath, are any of those available to be doing something like that, because this is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime event?
You know, I'm, I am of the understanding that the amount of monitoring that's going on between the USGS gauging stations, the eight grab samples, the samples that are also being taken by Res as part of the Clamath renewal efforts is pretty extensive, so I don't know what additional information we would be gathering.
Are you getting that information?
We get that information provided to us through the Aquatic Resources Group, we're not seeing the raw data yet, but we do get updates in terms of what the expected conditions will be, what they are, how DO is looking for in the river.
Okay, and so how are we doing with the negotiation with Chelsea for our county? And the no harm clause, as I guess where I'm looking for, that three years hence, if there's no returning spawners, that those in our area won't be held responsible for that?
Right, that is, they're, we're drafting a response, it's coming to the county, and it should be here.
Okay.
It's moving forward.
Okay. And with regard to what Supervisor Chris brought up about the end goal, I understand you don't have that yet, but is that equation being placed in planning?
Um, in terms of what type of planning?
An end goal, five hundred fish, whatever it is, a thousand fish, we're done.
You know, I don't have the answer to that question in terms of...
Understood, but I mean, is that part of the equation of what's going on in planning future?
I think it's too early to know what we would be planning for about available hatchery.
I'm not, I don't want a number, I actually...
No, no, I'm saying, so, I mean, I think we all would be able to map, if we had access, you know, we could figure out how much spawning available, rearing habitat there was.
I'm just hoping it's part of the dialogue.
Okay, yeah, definitely.
All right. And then lastly, are you potentially going to truck some of these smolts out?
You know, that's, that's part of that discussion that's going on right now, that Supervisor Ogren asked about, that plan, what we're gonna do, obviously, you know, water quality conditions, DO, suspended sediment, temperature will help drive, help drive that discussion.
Okay. I have one more public comment from Crystal, I think it's Maxwell, is that right?
In the meantime, is it possible somebody can close the drapes? I'm getting blinded.
Let me be useful for you, Wendy. Get out of your wig yourself.
Hi, Crystal Maxwell from Copco Lake. So far, I got here, like I said, later today. So far, almost every speaker has been making it sound a lot less disastrous than it is, just like he just was talking about the deer or a deer. The first ones that I know of that were killed was a mom and a baby, okay? So it wasn't just one, there's been multiples. The other day, I heard seven gunshots in a row. Next thing you know, here goes fishing game. So they're killing left and right, it's not just one or two things, it's a lot. And it really is irritating that fish and game that are supposed to be taking care of these animals did not have the audacity to put out water for them. They are going to need water to live, so obviously, they are gonna go through the mud so they can get to the water. That's why they're dying, because you didn't prevent it when you should have. Greg Jeter cut and cut these barrels, and we put water out for them. And it's not, not just like nine, you know, like was mentioned, eight or nine deer around here. We have, no kidding, in our yard, ten to fifteen, morning and night, okay? And usually, you see deer all over. I have seen two deer in the past week that I can say, that I can honestly say I've seen. But it's really irritating that it was, that that's supposed to be their priority, is wildlife, and the one thing they need, water, was not put out there, that we had to do it. And also, why is no one being prepared for this meeting? You, I, you guys keep asking for data, and I'm not, it's always, oh, I can't get to, I don't know that, or, and this is what we've been going through for years. Some of these people have been fighting this for twenty-five years, and I've only been here almost four years, and I can honestly say, I have not gotten answers to seventy-five percent of my questions. So I don't understand why this project was even gone through when they can't even answer simple questions.
Thank you. Donnie, is it Fontaine, maybe? I'm not...
Danny.
Danny, I'm sorry.
Danny Fontaine, Copco Lake resident. My question was about the parcel B lands that you mentioned. You said it's a possibility that that could be transferred eventually from the state to another entity, and my question is, couldn't it be possible in that transfer that there is a clause that they can't disallow public access in the transfer of it? And I plan on, I'll go down there anyway, I don't care, but it's just, it's an open-ended, kind of causes some insecurity with the residents out here not knowing what will happen with it, it's just undetermined. So, I was just wondering if in the transfer, there could be a clause that they have to allow public access.
Okay, thank you. Sure, back to you, and then we're gonna move on to the next item.
Okay, great, yeah, you guys are probably tired of me, I apologize for talking so much, but just to adjust, just the two questions that were just brought up, just like, I'd just go to the parcel Bs first, you know, California National Resource Agency is leading that effort, but I can pass that information on regarding that. The second regarding the deer, and, you know, I don't want people to think that anybody in the department, we didn't get into this profession, because we don't like fish and wildlife resources, and I don't want anybody in this room to think that the loss of a deer isn't important to the department, or the ten deer is somehow inconsequential. That being said, you know, this is deer winter range, and deer are unevenly distributed across this entire landscape, thousands of acres, utilizing different habitats, there's additional water sources from all tributaries and other locations. So I just want people to understand that we see deer here, but they're also spread throughout this entire area. And when the EIR looked at, you know, wildlife impacts, one of the things it identified as a long-term benefit of this project was the increase of over fourteen-hundred acres of winter deer habitat, and also the increased habitat connectivity and corridor connectivity, the deer that are moving to and from this area will be able to utilize now that in large locations, the reservoir is there. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harris. We're gonna move on...